Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the, what is today? November 2nd meeting of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee. We will do introductions. My name is Jane Reggio from Millville.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Karen Vernon, Millville.
Erin Pinaco, Millville.
Matt Errenworth, Assistant Superintendent.
Jack Geith, Blackstone.
Carrie Goddard, Blackstone.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
And did I see the other Karen on? She's not on. Okay. Thought she was on. Okay. So we simply have two items on our agenda today. So I will turn it over to Dr. DeFalco.
Thanks so much, Ms. Reggio. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see all of you. Just two things to discuss with the committee this evening, and I appreciate very much everybody making the time to have this, I think, very important conversation. The first discussion on the agenda this evening is to talk about some proposed early release days for this school year. And I'm going to share my screen with everybody. And I think while we, let me make sure everybody can see this here, while we know that these were not on the initial calendar, I say initial loosely because folks know we had to change the calendar about four times just to get into the school year with all the changes that kept happening over the late spring and summer at the state level. We also have kind of kept this notion that we're going to need to continue to be flexible and, you know, really mindful that things may continue to shift as the year goes forward. I think this is probably a very good example of one of those shifts that I am recommending to our school committee that we take. And before I share the specifics around the dates, I just want to get to the why so that anybody, you know, in our committee, you know, folks at home that are tuning in, understand that, you know, where we are coming from with these recommended early release days for students. And I would start out by saying, as folks know, we are in a hybrid model, particularly for grades four through 12, in a three days of in-person and then two days of remote and then vice versa. So that over the span of actually September 16th to the holiday break in December, our students will have had either 32 or 33 days of in-person, that face-to-face learning. And, you know, we are pleased to be able to provide as much in-person learning as we can, and we continue to think of ways to bring more students back into the fold. But with that, I also want to remind everybody that our teaching staff is working, like all of us, very different and is being as creative and innovative as any instructor, instructions, excuse me, or instructors that I've ever seen, in that not only working with students that are directly in front of them, but live streaming to students who are home, some of which are home part-time because they're in a hybrid model, and some of which are at home full-time because they are in a full-remote model. And so, as you can imagine, that's a lot to plan for. It's a lot to keep track of. And what we would like to do is actually be able to provide a little bit of relief to our teaching staff in order to afford them some additional time for planning. So I would like to be very clear that the recommended early release days before you this evening are not for staff. It's not for staff to, you know, conclude or wrap up their workday early. It's actually for them to be able to have the time they need to continue to plan for instruction. That's really different. And to make sure that they have time to not only design and develop their lessons for the kids sitting in front of them, but also for the ones who are at home, literally at the exact same time, to continue to learn and work with our technology and make sure that we are doing our best to meet the needs of all of our students, whether in-person or at home. And so what we're looking at here is a series of early release days. These are all Wednesdays, just so folks at home know, but that we would propose, the committee amend our school calendar for the year to include these early release days. And I just want to talk through them briefly. You'll notice that November, December, and January all have one early release day. That is because there is an early release day in November for Thanksgiving already. There is an early release day in December for the holiday vacation already, and we didn't want to have three early release days. So we are asking the committee to approve the amended calendar that would add one early release day in November for students and one for December for students. In January, you'll notice that we don't have one until the very end. That is because on January 15th, we have a professional development day for all staff, which is a non-school day for students. And we are working, we have worked with our teachers to actually allow them to come in and have a full day after a short staff meeting of lesson planning on the 15th of January. So we only needed to add one early release day in November, one in December, and then one in January. And then you will notice that the rest, February 10th, February 24th, March 10th, and March 24th, April 7th, and April 28th, May 5th, and May 19th, and then just one in June for the end of the year at June 9th. And so, again, you know, we are really hopeful that the calendar can be amended so that teachers will have the additional planning time that they need to make sure that they are prepared to continue to deliver instruction, both virtually and in-person, and in most cases, literally at the same time. So let me pause there and see if there are any questions.
So Jason, will the district consider options for parents who, kids are normally in school full-time or normally in school on those days, to use the people who aren't lesson-planning, like the paras or the super subs, whatever we're calling the extra teacher, to maybe do some larger group socially distance, keep the kids till the technical end of school day, or does that not work because of busing?
No, I think that's a great question, and we will definitely reach out to families and ask them who, you know, who may need that support and see what we can do with our partner teachers and, you know, any of our other staff members for that matter that might be available to do that with us, paraprofessionals or someone else. But we definitely will look to try to accommodate families who would need that additional support for sure.
Great. Anyone else?
Yeah, Tara. That was kind of my question. I understand the need for it based on how you explained it. I kind of have an issue, I think, with November and December just because of that childcare issue, especially for elementary families. So I'd be hesitant to personally want to approve those two dates unless we can find some kind of alternative to help those families.
Yeah, and we're happy to send out a, you know, a survey to families and see if they're in need of any type of, you know, childcare or support because the dates are, you know, we would go beyond just the two days, to be frank, but the one in November and the one in December, but because they are coming up pretty quick.
Uh huh. So I have, I have concerns with approving the latter of the dates, not knowing what our school days are going to look like after December. Are you, are you assuming, are we assuming that we're still on a full hybrid schedule with the Wednesdays? And are your Wednesdays planned to be more consistent for the Cohort One and Cohort Two? Because right now, the 18th and the 9th are affecting Cohort Two, and Cohort One is essentially finished with all of their, their full Wednesdays.
Yeah. So well, yes, so that's a great question, Erin. So, you know, in, in conversation with the commissioner as recent as 2:30 today, you know, he did share with us, there was a lot of conversation that we should assume that we are going to be in this model, whatever model we're in, dealing with the COVID issues and restrictions and provisions for the rest of the school year. And obviously, much conversation to happen still about what the rest of the school year should look like. Although if you listen to the governor's press conference today, Governor Baker, you know, there seems to be some very significant restrictions being placed on Massachusetts as a whole. However, he was very clear, which I was happy to hear, to be frank, but that schools will remain open. So I share that only to state, I don't see us shifting our model significantly, at least through the winter, in order to bring back more students. I would love to. I think the committee knows that. But I would, I would state at this point that we will be in this hybrid model, Erin, to your question, at least through the winter. And so as our leadership team meets in the next few weeks to develop our calendar for the second part of the year, we will design it in a hybrid model, you know, as a, I hate to use the term worst-case scenario, but we have to be, you know, planned, and we have to allow families to plan. And we would obviously incorporate these dates very carefully into that plan. I hope that answered your question.
I would just, I would like a commitment of some sort that there's going to be more consistency to the Wednesdays because I don't know what the method was that was used to get to where we are, but it was, it was very front-loaded to Cohort One. I think Cohort Two is only going on their third Wednesday right now, if I'm not mistaking. And Cohort One has finished Wednesdays. So all of these half-days, even the two that were already scheduled, are scheduled just to one, to the second cohort. And I guess my second question would be, was there any conversation of having, on these half-days, having full-remote day, a full-remote half-day, most specifically for the high school? It just, because, because of the block scheduling, and they're essentially going in for two periods. So was there any, I know that kind of brings us back to the 2-1-2 model versus the, but these half-days, it seems, if they're needed, that it just might be an easier day for the teachers and the students in, on the high school side to just all be remote for the morning.
So we did have discussions back in the summer when we laid out our calendar for the year, and we discussed what model we were going to go with. We did not select a 2-1-2 model. I will tell you, I'm incredibly grateful for that. The commissioner has been very clear, as of our last two conferences with him, that he is going to be pushing districts out of 2-1-2, that that actually doesn't, from a medical perspective, make any sense. There's no real thing as a deep cleaning. No one can define that for me, frankly. We do that every day in our schools, just to be honest. So that that 2-1-2 kind of concept is unnecessary. He said it twice now, two consecutive meetings, the last two meetings we've had. So what I can say is that shifting that now would provide less face-to-face instruction for our high school students, and I know that we certainly don't want that. And having a full-remote day, unless it was an asynchronous day, it wouldn't actually be beneficial because all the teachers will still be on, you know, for a full school day. That's the way we've set up our, our remote instruction. The students still follow their full-class schedule. So with a half-day model, while I know not ideal, I do think it would be more beneficial because at least the students would get a half-day of in-person instruction and remote instruction, and it would allow teachers about three hours of additional planning time in each one of these days.
So, so Jason, perhaps to Erin's point, because I agree completely, I think the more time we have them face-to-face, the better that we are. But maybe when we get to those January dates and we have, you know, two in a month, maybe, or the February, I guess, but maybe the first one, you know, when you're, if you're in-person, if you're, you know, Cohort One and you're in-person, maybe you do the, your morning classes and maybe the next time you do your afternoon, you know, so maybe you can alternate which classes you're actually attending on those days so that you don't, twice a week, always miss your afternoon Wednesday classes.
Yeah, makes sense.
But I think we've also gotten some feedback from some teachers asking for that time to have all the kids together at once. So our high school teachers, because of the way they're running their, their streaming in the classroom, they never have everyone together on that classroom at once. There's kids in the classroom, kids online. I'm just wondering if it was something that had been explored.
But they would, they would still not have all their kids, you saying?
They have them all, all on Google Classroom at the same time. I mean, I, I want, I would, I wish we were talking about more days. I wish we were talking about how we were going to be bringing other grades back. I guess my question is, what, is it the hybrid teachers or the teachers with the kids five days? I mean, they're, they're running their days typical, the K to three, but they'll still have a hundred.
I'm not clear in your question, Erin, I'm sorry. What about the, what about the teachers in the hybrid or the teachers in the K3? I just want to make sure I answered what you're asking.
Who is, who needs, who needs the planning time? Is it the hybrid teachers that are trying to juggle these?
Oh, I understand what you're asking.
Schedules versus the K to threes are five days?
Yes.
Continuous learning.
That's a great question. So there is not one faction of our staff that does not need this time. And let me explain what I mean by that. So in our K to three teachers, those teachers either have, the majority of them have teaching a partner teacher, spread across two classrooms, and they're actually streaming into one room. So they need time in order to continue the planning with that. That's a totally different model. It's kind of interesting for you to see in action, they're actually on wireless mics with their voice, with a speaker in the other classroom and kind of vice versa, going back and, back and forth across both classrooms. So I know that they very much would appreciate the time, even though they're in-person, they're still using a lot of different technology in order to stream into the other room. And some of them have partner teachers, paraprofessionals, special education teachers that they're trying to do this with. So while we certainly could use some of those staff to help if there are parents who have any childcare needs, those that would not be needed will definitely be needed to do the planning with the classroom teacher. And then at the other level, you have either the full-remote, 100% remote students. And frankly, our teachers need the extra time to do a lot of things in terms of not just lesson planning, but also connecting with families. That's a really different model, being 100% remote than at least having some of them in-person through a hybrid, or the full-in-person spread out across both classrooms and coordinating across many adults. And then, of course, you have the 4 through 12 hybrid who are doing the live streaming. Or in the middle school case, they are, their partner teacher is one of their team teachers, and that they'll need some time to work with, to work with their team teachers to make sure that they're all on the same page. So it's really the extra three hours and, you know, on, if it's November, December, or January, will make a, will make a pretty big difference in terms of the coordination and communication across the adults. And it's each of the unique models. I hope that answered your question, Erin.
Thank you.
So I guess, I think it's really hard to understand the work that's going into this from a, from a teacher perspective, but I'll share with you what one veteran teacher shared this weekend in a, in a group that I was in, that, you know, she's been teaching for 24 years, and she feels like a first-year teacher. Like everything is, is different. Everything is new. And, you know, I know myself, I'm, I'm teaching virtually, and just to do a vocabulary lesson, which used to be, you know, copy the definitions of seven vocabulary words, you know, now is, how do I get it online? How do I make it interactive? How do I get them to respond? How do I give them feedback? How do I grade this? You know, just really simple things you've been doing, you know, rote-ly that, you know, you could do in your sleep now require hours and hours of time. And I, I do truly believe we will burn out, not just here at BMR, but across the Commonwealth, across the country, we will burn out teaching staff and see, you know, great numbers of people who, who by the end of the year just truly believe they, you know, can't keep up with this if we have to start 2021 this way as well. So, you know, I think any break we can give them, any little piece of relief that, that, you know, just lets them take a sigh and a deep breath and say, okay, I have 20 minutes to try to figure this out, I, I think can only be helpful to the students in the long run.
So where does this leave us with our time on learning?
We'll be, we'll be fine. You know, there's an expression that John Dioria, who is a, was a superintendent and a executive director, Teachers 21, he is now a doctoral professor, said to me when I started my first principalship, and it's always stuck with me, to reach the kids, you got to reach the adults. And we can say and we can do whatever we want, folks, but if our teachers are burnt, the teachers are burnt. And, you know, I, I'm going to stand here and stand very strongly by our teaching staff to say that I know they need the extra time. And I certainly know, and I'm not implying that no one, you know, was thinking that on our, in our meeting, but I do know folks that are watching, you know, it may be a frustration point for, for families, and I definitely understand that. I do. But I also know that I want to make sure that our teachers, now that we're in it and we know what this looks like and feels like, you know, folks could say, well, you should have planned for this over the summer. And I would say, sure. I wouldn't disagree, except we didn't know what this was going to feel like when we got rolling. And we've had more in-person instruction than any school system, at least I can speak for Worcester County. I don't know about anywhere else, but I can speak for Worcester County. So, you know, I, I do feel that the teachers definitely need this, this time.
So is this enough?
I think, I think it's a healthy compromise between what some systems have, that had this 2-1-2 kind of concept, which I think would be incredibly challenging for families if there was every Wednesday, you know, a full-remote kind of day. I think it's probably a healthy compromise. I'm sure if you asked our teaching staff, they would prefer more, I'm sure. And we'd love to give them more, but I think we've got to find the right balance because we also have to insulate, right? Our goal was intellectual health and is part of our, part of our goals for reopening, and I think we need to stick with that, too. So I think it's, I think it's the right balance.
So do you have your, I'm sorry, what was the answer to the question about planning for January forward? I know you said still hybrid, plan on it for the year, but how are you factoring the Wednesdays?
Yeah. So the, so the good news is, I think, Erin, to that point, is we haven't set the cohort calendar yet. So once, or if these are approved, we'll obviously, would it take these dates and incorporate those into our, our cohort planning?
Well, and in, and in the January timeframe, short of Martin Luther King, there's not a lot of Monday holidays. There's just Memorial Day.
Yeah, but I, I guess, coming off of last week, we had a professional day on a Friday, and those kids didn't get the Wednesday. So I don't know that the Mondays were even factored in to, so if the Mondays were factored in, then that Friday should have been, too, where it should have been like a Monday, Tuesday for Cohort One, Wednesday, Thursday for Cohort Two, and everyone had Friday off because of PD.
Yeah, I think the way that the, the way the team laid out the first September through December was a total number of days. So if you were to count them, you'll see that Cohort One, I think, had 33 and Cohort Two off 32 or vice versa. So I think it was more about a split in the number of in-person days, but I think your point is very well taken, Erin, about looking at the days in each week.
Just for the consistency.
Yeah.
I think a lot of parents expected it to be every other Wednesday, and, and if that Monday was there, or that we even had a Friday, that shift would have equaled out to equal time for the week. So that, that's, I, I'm glad that I was able to make that point. Thank you.
No, and I appreciate that feedback, and we will absolutely make sure that that is taken into account when we make the next cohort calendar, for sure. Thank you for that.
Is there anyone else who has questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the early release days for this calendar year.
Can we make it with the change or pending the November and December? Or all of them?
Pending it in terms of what, Tara?
Having something available for those families who need the childcare for those full days. Those are coming up quick. I just think they're going to be hard to adjust schedules.
I, I guess you'd have to make the motion. I don't, I don't.
So the motion to approve dates listed except for November 18th and December 12th, I'm sorry, December 9th, unless there is an alternative for those students to stay in school if childcare is needed?
Would anybody like to second it that way or say something else?
I'll second that.
So there's a motion to, to institute early release days in when, in January through June, and additionally, November 18th and December 9th, provided that a facility can offer parents an alternative for those that don't have daycare. Does that sound good? Or correct, or what you were trying to say?
I think so.
Does that make sense, Dr. DeFalco?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're going to offer it on all the dates, so it doesn't make a difference to me if you want to word the motion that way.
It sounds as if there's a concern that if it, if it falls through in another school, we wouldn't want to leave parents without an option. But it also sounds like you're going to provide an option, so.
Yeah, we're going to send out a survey and see who needs it.
You still want to word it that way then, Tara?
I guess just to guarantee that there's something.
So all those in, in favor of early release days, provided that the, on November 11th and December 9th, there is also, well, can I amend that to say on all days, there's a daycare option for families, or a, not daycare, after, after noon? I don't know what you would call it, but.
Well, I don't, I, I feel like after, we don't have a schedule set after December right now. I feel like the reason that Tara's putting those two dates out there is families have already planned for their, their, their Wednesday cohort days. I, I don't, I don't know that it's something we should necessarily offer after January, but I'm sure that that's, was always Jason's plan. I mean, you could end up with a full building full of kids, so how is, how are the teachers going to collaborate if, if we do that? I think, and we're not going to provide busing at the end of.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that people will, you know, very similar to the Boys and Girls Club, will have an option for you to have your child remain in school till 3 o'clock or 2:30 or whatever the timeframe is. However, understand if you choose that option, you have to pick them up.
I just don't think we should add in that we're supplying, we're, we are going to offer childcare on the later dates because we have to see how that goes, too. I mean, you, socially distanced with the number of kids needing it on our other, we have two other half-days in November that we're not offering childcare on, the day before Thanksgiving, the day, the day before Christmas or break. So these are, these are just because we're making.
Motion is only for the 18th and 9th.
Right. Just because we've, we had already approved that school calendar, and most parents have probably planned through, through December. I, I don't want to add in that we're going to offer it as an option for all of these days.
I agree. Like you said, by January, people can make arrangements. I just think that November, December are kind of short notice.
I mean, we technically do need the kids to go home.
Anyone else? Okay, anyone else? All those in favor of the original motion to offer, or to schedule early release days on November 18th, December 9th, January 27th, February 10th, February 24th, March 10th, March 24th, four seven, uh, April 7th, April 28th, May 5th, May 19th, and June 9th, provided that there is an after, uh, half-day option, not after school day, but after the half-day option of care for families that don't have the ability to pick their children up at the half-day point, um, signified by saying aye.
Only on November 8, November and December days?
Yeah, 11, 9, and 12, whatever it was, it's gone from the screen now. 12, 9, I think. Yeah, 12, 9.
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, I didn't get a lot of ayes. So if you have a raised hand, you can raise your hand, too, if you didn't unmute. Cause I only heard three.
Aye.
Aye. Did I not come through? This is Karen. Aye.
Okay.
Aye again.
One, two, three. Jack, you're good. Erin, you were good. Okay. All right, any abstention?
Okay.
Okay, next topic.
Great, thanks, everybody. Uh, so next, um, I'd like to have a conversation about, uh, an opportunity um, that superintendents were made aware of across the state, uh, last week. Um, I think it's a really interesting, um, way for us to continue to strive to keep in-person, uh, learning to the best, uh, we can as we continue particularly to move through, uh, the next few months. Um, and, um, so I have up on the screen here, uh, a slide from a slide deck that was shared, uh, with myself and many other superintendents from across Massachusetts, from the Department of Education and the Department of Public Health. Um, and as a matter of fact, I can kind of scoot forward here and show, uh, the community who was present, uh, for our conversation last, I believe it was last Thursday.
Is it, is it my screen, or is nothing, is the, are we only seeing the top of your?
Oh, can, can, can you all see this slide? You cannot see it. Hmm. All right, let me try to reshare. Give me one second. Maybe it was something with me. Is that it?
Yep.
Maybe just had to change that. All right, thanks for that, Jane. Um, so what you can see here is essentially, uh, who was present for our conversation last week. Um, and you'll see the members from the Department of, uh, Education and the Department of Public Health and Human Services. Uh, many of you have probably seen a lot of the DPH names, uh, for at least the last eight months anyhow, um, as we've been talking about reopening our schools and doing so safely. Um, and so, uh, there is a really unique opportunity available to school systems across the state um, that are providing in-person instruction. Um, uh, at least those are the systems that will be prioritized, uh, for this. Um, and essentially what the Department of Public Health and Department of Education is doing is looking for partners, um, that would like to work with them around what they're referring to as a Phase One, um, COVID-19 testing pilot. Uh, specifically using, um, the Abbott-Bionex Now test, which is an antigen test. So remember, uh, there are two types of COVID tests. There's a PCR test, that's the one that gets shipped off to the lab. Uh, takes 48 hours or so to get the results back, sometimes a little quicker, sometimes a little slower. Um, and it is certainly a much more reliable test. Uh, but there is another, another test, which is called a rapid test, uh, that can be used. Uh, it is an antigen test, uh, and it looks for COVID proteins essentially in your body. Um, and Karen Young is on the call, is can certainly weigh in, uh, on this, uh, on the medical side of it, if you have very specific medical, uh, questions. Um, and, uh, it is a less invasive type of test, and it is one that we could do, uh, right in our, um, in our nursing offices in our schools. Um, and so, uh, the call on Thursday was to talk to us a bit about, um, the protocol, the five-step protocol that we would need to make sure is in place in our school system in order to bring this, uh, testing, this optional testing, I should say, uh, into our schools to help identify any, uh, in-school students or staff, um, as quickly as we can using a rapid antigen COVID test, uh, for a positive or negative result. Uh, and so before I kinda talk about the five steps, I'd like to, again, uh, talk a little bit about the why behind this, uh, because I do wanna be really clear, um, in moving forward with this testing protocol, uh, we would not change any of the COVID protocols or procedures that we've already put in place. In other words, regardless of the results of the test, uh, of the rapid test that we could administer in our, uh, nursing offices across our schools, we still wouldn't change the protocols, um, that we have in place. And let me give you an example of what I'm referring to. So say we were to move forward, uh, with this Bionex Rapid Test. Um, and if we administered the test and got a negative result, but the child was still having COVID-like symptoms, uh, we would still ask the child to go home, or staff member to go home, uh, rest and follow up and get another test if necessary. Um, and I think that's important to note, because as many of you have probably heard, I'm sure you've seen the same research that I've seen, uh, the antigen tests or the rapid tests are not as reliable as the PCR test. And so we certainly don't wanna get into a situation where we have any false negatives and send students or staff back to the classroom, and then have a situation where the child or the staff member is actually positive. And we certainly don't wanna, to create a scenario, um, where we could have a fa- a false negative, and then, of course, spread the virus in any which way. Uh, so we certainly would not do that. Um, I think the real benefit for us as a system in getting on board with this Phase One, um, uh, testing administration, um, of the rapid test would be to give us as soon as possible uh, any positive results that we would, that we would have, that would allow us to start contact tracing and identifying any other students, uh, or staff members that might have been exposed uh, to the particular student or staff member that had a positive test. Um, as you know, um, it can take up to 48 hours to get test results back. That's really valuable time, um, that we could be contact tracing and quarantining, or asking fam, uh, asking our, our students and their families, or staff members and their families to quarantine. Um, and I think every minute counts. And so, uh, with a rapid test that we could administer right here in our nursing offices for our in-person learners and staff, it would give us the information that they would need, frankly, and that we would need in order to start contact tracing and making sure that everybody is safe as possible, as quickly as possible. Um, and so with that, there is essentially a five-step, uh, process that we would need to put in place. They're referred to by the Department of Public Health and the Department of Education as these required preconditions, uh, and I will just run through them, um, uh, with the committee and the community. And on this particular slide deck, uh, it is Slide 13. This is what I had emailed to the school committee on Friday. But you will see, uh, the first in these five preconditions that needs to be set is essentially a, uh, clinical lab, uh, lab improvement, um, amendment certification of waiver. So basically, it's a waiver form that would allow our nursing offices to administer, um, the rapid test, uh, because we're not allowed. So we would need a particular waiver from the Department of Public Health in order to do so. And, uh, the Department of Public Health has been very, uh, vocal, it was very vocal on our call with them last week, that they'll, they'll work with us and help us do, uh, this, uh, this process so that they could administer schools this certification or a certificate of waiver. Uh, the second step, when that is in place, is we would need a standing, uh, test order from our school district's physician. So we would ask our physician to write us a, a standing order, so that we could administer, um, the, uh, rapid tests in our nursing offices. Um, and the next three are actually pretty, pretty direct. Uh, we would need to have the appropriate PPE, uh, which will not be a problem, uh, for us. We have the majority of what we already need, to be frank. We would probably just need to order additional, uh, N95 masks. Um, we would have a training for our school personnel, um, and, um, our, our school nurses would be able to administer, uh, this test. Um, and then, uh, consent. This is the most important piece, I think, uh, from our perspective, once you get the safety provisions in place. And this is basically consent from families, um, approving, uh, and authorizing us to administer, um, a rapid COVID test. And quite frankly, even with consent, we would still ask that the parents are present, um, to make sure that they're there, uh, at least for our younger students, um, when we're administering the test. Um, although we would get authorization both in writing and, um, you know, then, of course, over the phone, uh, before administering anything, uh, of this nature. Um, and likewise from staff. We need to make sure that we have consent from our staff before, uh, we would administer the rapid test. And while we certainly know that the antigen tests aren't perfect, we also know that as soon as we can get information, uh, the better for us on the school side, so that we can continue to contact trace and try to insulate, uh, the virus from spreading. Um, and so what, uh, I wanted to do this evening was just talk with the committee and the community a little bit about this opportunity. Um, I submitted a, a letter of intent or interest, if you will, to, uh, Department of Education and DPH on Friday. And they will be following up with school systems, um, sometime this week to confirm that we are interested in moving forward. And then they are going to prioritize which systems that they'll be working with. And I have to tell you, uh, because we have so much in-person learning going on, uh, I'm confident that we would be given a priority with that. So I wanted to, like I said, just take a few minutes this evening and talk a little bit with the committee about it, uh, and see what questions that you all may have, uh, about this opportunity. And of course, give Karen an opportunity to address anything from the medical perspective. I'm assuming she's still, yep, there she is.
Yes, she is. So, um, I wanted, uh, Jason, um, talked to Erin and I about this a little bit when he first heard about it. Um, and Erin had some really positive things to say, so I hope she will again. But, um, I wanted to be very clear that we're talking about something to test our school community. So if I live in, in Millville and I'm not feeling well, I can't run to the school and get a COVID test. It's not a lab, um, situation where anybody can come in and, and get a rapid test. It's, somebody goes to the nurse, they're not feeling well, um, then we seek the permission to, to give them a test, so we have all the information we can, we can have. And a parent could, could still say, no, you know, nope, nope, no interest. Um, so that's my understanding, correct?
You are correct, and, uh, I also would like to add to that, Jane, that it would, at this point, it would be for symptomatic students and staff only. So only those with symptoms, it was not, you know, it's not random screening or anything.
And they'd still be sent home, whether it was positive or negative, like Jason said, they'd still be sent home, so... Still follow the regular protocol. Anyone have thoughts, questions, concerns?
Written consent, not verbal.
Say that again, Karen.
It would also be written consent, not verbal consent, because it would be an invasive procedure on a minor. And I am not comfortable with not having the consent be in writing.
Sure. Tara?
So who determines that they're symptomatic? If someone just thinks someone in their class has sniffles, they wanna send them to the nurse?
No, this is if, this is if a student doesn't feel well and goes to the nurse, and the nurse evaluates, as we currently do, and says, you have COVID-like symptoms, calls the parent, sees that the parent's interested, looks to see if there, there's consent on file. The parent could say, you know, even if there is a consent on file, by the way, the parent could still say, nah, change on mine, I don't want my kid tested, and we would say, okay. Regardless, we would send the child home if they meet the requirements or the threshold for that. But it wouldn't be the teacher saying to the student, you need to go to the nurse, you know, you don't look well, go get a COVID test. And that's kinda, is that, that was kinda what you were asking. Yeah, they wouldn't have thought of me to do that.
Right, and then those same idea, I guess, with the close-contact kids, it'd be the option, if, even if they weren't symptomatic, or no?
So at this stage, the, this, uh, particular phase of testing, it's supposed to be symptomatic students only. I do get the sense, though, uh, and this, this is just me, this wasn't what they said, I don't wanna sort of put words in anyone's mouth, but, uh, they're calling this Phase One for a reason. My sense is there's probably going to be a Phase Two. They have 3 million of these, uh, tests, and there's about 450,000 students doing, uh, in-person instruction on any given day in our, in our state, um, out of a million, with just under a million public school students. So my, my sense is that possibly Phase Two, or that next phase, might be asymptomatic students, but they didn't say that. I'm just inferring on what, you know, on what our conversation, uh, sounded like last week.
All right, and then these are rapid, so what are the results, 24 hours, 48 hours?
15 minutes.
15 minutes.
Oh, they're 15, sorry if I missed that.
No, it's okay.
But so that's where the accuracy isn't 100%. There could be a significant amount of false negatives.
So what's interesting, I'll share with you, there's a study going on in Lawrence General right now. Can you see Slide 6, did that come up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, what DPH shared was that on this particular, uh, Bionex test, there was a 97% sensitivity, uh, rating and a 98% specificity in the clinical study that they've done. So I certainly, again, I'm, I'm not a medical person by any sense, I won't pretend to be, but this was the, these were the results that they had shared with us, but there is a much larger clinical study going on now at Lawrence General.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Questions? Concerns? Uh, is this something the school committee needs to vote on?
Uh, I don't believe so. Um, right now, we're, we are, like I said, we filled out our intent, or letter of interest. It was a, uh, very brief survey. And then, uh, next, they will be asking if we are interested in pursuing, um, you know, going to the next phase of the process, because if that's the case, we will have to start doing the clinical waiver, um, uh, process, and then the standing order. But I do not believe that we need to take any specific action, um, on this, on this item. I think it, because it's an, it's an opportunity that would be offered to families, that they don't have to do it.
Right, right.
So anybody could say, no, we're all set, not, and we wouldn't, I mean, just wouldn't test them, just fine.
Yep.
Just another layer of precaution, folks are interested in it.
And I assume, Karen, there's pretty intense protocols for what to do with the testing units after they've given the results. So in other words, you test a person, you swab their nose, or whatever it is you do on this test, and then you put it on the chart, and it turns green, or purple, or pink, or whatever it does, or gets to a certain level. All of those materials, I assume there's disposal procedures for, or would be?
I, I, I'm, so I, I have not, no, but...
Um, we actually, you aren't, you aren't coming through, Karen? You're, you're breaking up. Jason, do you know the answer to that question?
Yes, so they did talk about, and I'm actually going through it now. They did discuss, uh, on the call, um, that there would be a training on how to dispo- can you hear me okay, Jane?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, excellent. Uh, that there would be a very thorough training on how to dispose of, uh, all of the, uh, testing equipment. And so I'm just looking through now to see if I can find that.
I, I assume, I mean, I, I can't fathom a program that wouldn't include that, but... So I, I don't need the specifics, I just wanna make sure we do it?
Yes, yeah, it's part of the pro, it's part of the, uh, training protocol.
Okay.
Um, and they do have a link to the, yeah, the training protocol on the, um, on, in, in the PowerPoint.
Yep, yep. Okay. Anyone else? Anybody have severe reservations? I think it's positive step.
Yeah, I think this testing is, um, a lot like what Nichols is doing, and, uh, and only a little unlike it, because everyone at Nichols is required to test regularly. And in this case, it's, um, it's not a general test, which is fine, and that's not what we need as a community, so I think this is probably the right step.
I agree, Jack. Okay, okay.
That's all I've got this evening, Jane.
Anyone have anything else? Any school committee issues or community ones? Um, Sarah, Dr. DeFalco, and I did attend the Blackstone Finance Committee meeting. Um, we had several- had several questions about the regional agreement, one of which was, why not do the membership proportional to the, the size of the villages that are in the region? And I will just generally remind community members that we looked at this agreement to change things that were out of spec and reflect certain practice. And having a committee of four and four has been the practice since the region was created. So we weren't making it, looking at making dramatic alternate changes unless they were required by the state, or, you know, agreed upon by the entire committee that we had pulled together. So we did not entertain that. We reflect what the current practice is. But if people have other questions, we certainly would welcome them, and we look for everybody to be at the meeting on November 14th from the town of Blackstone at 10:00 AM in the auditorium. Our next school committee meeting is November 12th. It will be another Zoom meeting. So if people have something for public forum and would like to be on that Zoom call, they should contact myself as the chair, so that we can get you the Zoom link for public forum. If you have questions, you can certainly submit those the same way that you have in the past, but to actually speak at the meeting, you would need to be, let us know in advance that you have the intention to do so. Okay, hearing nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Karen?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And welcome, Alex, and thank you, Alex. I look forward to meeting you. Not sure, maybe I have, I don't know, it's hard to tell from the photo, but thank you for your help in doing this meeting for us.
No problem. Thanks.
Okay, and we are gone. You can do the leave the meeting. Thanks, everybody.
Good night. Thanks, folks.
Aye.
Take good care.